And they call the City Council Work Session on November 3rd, 2021 to order. But Susie, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Copeland is absent. Tom Baylor.
Here.
Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Jeff Gard is joining us shortly, absent for now.
Can you hear me, Jeff?
Yeah, I got you.
Oh, okay. Jeff Gard. That's where the other one. Melina Meyer.
Hello, that.
Is absent.
You just asked me if I'm here.
I did, so we got you as present. Let me finish up roll call and then we're starting. Anne Chaffer.
Here.
We're giving the roll call, sorry.
David Allison.
Here.
And David Gleason is absent. That is a quorum of council, though.
Helen, did you want to just kick us off?
Sure.
Okay.
So all of you have received a packet with a lot of information in it. And I wanted to start off first by qualifying the information in the packet with the fact that the numbers are changing daily as more information comes in. Order it again. So the budget that's presented, I will say this about the revenue side, and we'll go through it with you shortly, but I want to give an overview. The revenue is as tight as it can possibly be. And then today I learned of $50,000 in grants that the library has received, the museum's received, and we got an unexpected windfall from ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Act. So we have another $331,000 that we just received from the feds through the state. Actually, it's $600,000, but we get to allocate $300,000 of it to next fiscal year budget we're looking at. So as I say, the numbers are changing with some frequency. I do hope that what we can talk about tonight is what your council's priorities are and where we should really focus our attention for cuts or additions. And I also want to let you know that tomorrow we start our CBA union negotiations, and those numbers will definitely impact the budget. We'll be finalizing those discussions on Monday or Tuesday latest, and then next week on Wednesday when we have a special meeting for the budget. I hope to have something to present to you to discuss with the CBA, and you can make adjustments or ratify what the recommendations are. And then we'll be able to lock this budget a lot tighter. But right at the moment, that CBA is going to provide a pretty big question mark in this year's budget. The other thing is that this budget is loaded with the requests that came through from department heads. You've heard from some department heads, and I have two people here from our staff who I really want to make sure I have an opportunity to share with you. They're thinking behind the budgets in front of you. So Duncan from Parks and Rec and Sam, of course, from Public Works, they're here to answer any questions and explain where they're at. So without further ado, I think I'm going to turn things over to Duncan and Sam to just give an overview of the information in the budgets being presented, and then we'll dive back into the details in front of you, and I'll give you a little bit more information around that and certainly answer any questions. Does that seem reasonable? Counselor, yeah? Okay. Yeah, so thank you again for making these pages so much bigger, easier to read. Duncan.
Hello there. For those who I haven't met, I'm Duncan Chisholm. I'm the new Parks and Recreation Director. I've been in since early July, but I've got this very low profile, just observing and seeing how things operate. So apologies if I haven't met you, but I will make my way around and meet you and talk with you individually at some point soon. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some of my thinking, give you a little bit of context of where we're at at the moment, talk about some of my aspirations that I'd like to put forward for Parks and Recreation. So I've got a few slides. This is based off a presentation I gave last night to the Parks and Rec.
May I ask you to speak into your mic really close for the person on the phone?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
My accent sometimes can be a little bit.
That's okay.
Difficult, too. So this is based on a presentation I gave last night to the Parks and Recreation Commission, just to give some context. So just some real observations in the five months that I've been here. So for financial year 2021, you know, our budget of revenue versus as a percentage of operating expenses. Budakie Recreation Center is set at 16%, and Swinpool is set at 12%. That's revenue versus expense. Nationally, it's around about 23% that Parks and Recreation departments or systems do across the board throughout the country. Where we are actually at, and this is only up until the 30th of September, is Budakie is actually ahead of its target at the moment, the Swinpool Center called to go. But Budakie is bringing in 23% of its revenue versus operating expenses. Unfortunately, the Swinpool is only at 5%. So effectively, that says that the city is picking up 95% of the cost of the operation of Swinpool. Attendance-wise, again, unfortunately, it's a little bit of a murky number simply because our systems don't capture users particularly well. But year-to-date, Budakie has done approximately 6,800 entries, and the pool's done almost 2,900. Unfortunately, as I said, we don't count use by the high school, and we don't count use by the elementary school doing learner's swim programs. So it's not a true reflection of our actual numbers of people through the door. And again, just as a side note, our cost per user year-to-date, which is essentially the expenses we've had divided by the number of people who fit through the door, Budakie's current cost is $27, almost $28 per person, and the pool's currently $63, almost $64 per person. I don't quite know what that means because I've got no context to that, so I don't know whether that's been the cost every year or it's just this year. And as I said, it's also year-to-date, so just moving on. Yep, sure.
Yep, sorry. So the attendance, so that's, you've got 5,440 member entry, so that could be one person going in 100 times.
Yes, true. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's unique, what I would call unique entries. So it's a member swiping their card.
So somewhere along the line, you'll have a number of members that share experience.
Yeah. So some other observations. For 2021, I'm unsure if our actual fee schedule includes city's sales tax. So my reading of the city's tax code is that recreation is a taxable service. If we haven't been taking tax, that means the actual revenue that we're reporting is Sorry, if we do take tax, that means the revenue we report is less. If we haven't taken this tax, that means we're actually missing out on tax revenue, which could have gone into repairs, maintenance, and things like that. Another example is Scans Kevin. Again, my reading of tax codes is that Scans Kevin should be charged a 12% tax rate because it should also attract public accommodation services tax because people spend the night there. So the other thing to point out from my reading is that our fees and charges actually haven't changed since 2013, yet inflation has gone up by somewhere between 17 and 18% over that time period. So that basically means for every dollar that we spend, we're actually, in today's dollars, it's a dollar waiting. Memberships, in my opinion, we've got a really complex membership structure. We've only got two facilities. Again, by my calculation, each facility offers 16 different membership options, plus 13 additional combination options. So we offer 45, at least 25, membership options across two facilities. And again, from my reading and the reports I've managed to pull out, we don't simply sell a lot of the membership cadence. Nobody's really buying them. I've run a couple of reports from 2019 onwards for some tangy reason, so I think four over the period, two years in those. Any questions on that? So I think, I believe we were really understaffed in all areas of my department. As you're probably acutely aware, we actually have no aquatic staff, no lifeguards. I've got two permanent Parks Maintenance staff and one seasonal staff member. That's for all our facilities and all our parks, they are stretched. There's too much work, they can't get around to it. I don't know if you've been, for example, looked at the Fisherman's Memorial lately, but they pulled it apart, but haven't stuck it back together. So that's not acceptable, so I need to work through that. Again, no permanent staff at Budakie, all my staff are temporary. The other thing which I've noticed is we actually haven't got any standard operating procedures at Budakie in the swim pool. There's no work instructions of how to do anything. We need to update our policies and the procedures at the pool to be able to meet the CDC's Model Aquatic Health Code, which is basically the industry best practice document. We need to update all our business operation processes and work instructions, getting there's no process written down for reserving things, what our refund or cancellation policy is. I've just updated our membership agreements, which have gone from one page to five pages because there's a whole lot of terms and conditions we should be getting people to be aware of. So we need to improve all our business practices. The other observation is we're gaps in information on the conditions of our buildings, of our assets. We've got no preventative maintenance plans. We've got no information on community needs. We've got no information on even custom feedback. Do the people who come to Budakie in the pool enjoy it? Where do we need to improve? So there's a number of things we need to up our game, and that's what I'm here to do. But I just thought it was important just to give a little bit of context and some observations I've found over my first five months. I can talk about this if you want. So this is, I've done a bit of work around creating a new mission, vision, values for my department to give us some direction. What are we actually wanting to do? How are we going to do it? All right, so I won't read this word for word, but obviously a vision, you know, we want to talk about where we want to be in the future. The mission is really one of our purposes, and then I've developed a number of values which I'd want our department to represent, so all our staff need to buy into all of the vision. So do that. So I've gone through an internal process with my staff to bounce some stuff around with them, and this is what we've come up with so far. It's a bit of a work in progress, but in terms of our mission, why are we here? You know, we really want to enhance people's quality of life. That's what a Parks and Recreation Department is about, is about providing, you know, great experiences for people, quality facilities for people to be more active, more healthy, and more connected in the community. That's our bread and butter. Down the track, I want us to become more class, you know? I don't say that lightly. We should be able to have processes and systems which meet national best practice. Just because we're a small town, that doesn't mean we can't adapt, all right? So I really want to take us on a journey to be a quality system, you know, that thrives through excellence and innovation, because we ask for more. We're resource poor, we need to think on everything, all right? So that leads to the values, you know? So a lot of naval gazing on my behalf around how do we want to protect ourselves? So we're about people, we're about collaboration, we're about stewardship, excellence, opportunity, responsiveness, and innovation. At the end of the day, we're, our department is about people. We serve people. If we don't have people, we don't exist. So that needs to be at the forefront of everything we do. And it comes back to the why, you know? Why do we do this, Bob? What's the outcome for the community? Obviously, we need to acknowledge success when we work together, so that can be internally throughout the city or state partners, or whoever it may be. We can't do everything by ourselves, so how do we leverage opportunities to work with others? I think we also want to be able to care and treasure open space in natural areas. I'm not sure that's at the forefront of our thinking at the moment, so how do we progress to that? I also want us to be always improving. What do we do different every day which makes our operation better? We also got to provide welcoming and safe opportunities and environments for people to have recreation in the widest sense of the word, you know? That could be playing, it could be learning, connecting, improving, and growing, all right? And ultimately, we also want to be responsible, responsive to the needs of the community. So continual improvement about what people want, when they want it, and how we're going to do that. So that's my thoughts, and I welcome everybody's input into this because, as I said, it's a working, working document, and it's going to be a journey.
And I want to add something because in the conversations that I've had with Duncan, it is impossible to do anything more substantive than what we do, and even what we do isn't enough. I mean, we currently are at risk with our pool and the lifeguards of getting into some issues with users if there's an incident. So Duncan's been bringing all this to my attention, and the budget that's in front of you, the proposed budget, definitely reflects an increase in staff and a commitment to doing things better. I think Duncan will be the first to say it's, what he's put in front of you is ambitious, but it's needed, and the question is, is how quickly we can move those things along and how big of an investment this council wants to put into that. So Duncan and I have already done some negotiating, and I think people expect. But there's, there are things that he absolutely has to have on the ground in order to provide those recreational services at the level of quality that allows users to feel safe and comfortable and have access, and allows the city to do it without risk of liability.
So just some explanations around some of the numbers that I've put in the budget. So one of the things I wanted to do was create a new cost center, which can be department-wide. So rather than have everything split up into three or four different cost centers, we take one cost center which applies to projects which go across those four areas, all right? So for example, at the moment in 2021, my salary is paid 100% out of Budakie. I work across the entire department, so that's not fair for that cost center, you know? The other things I want to talk about is some fees for what I call professional services. So we need to update our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The current one on the city website is dated year 2000. There has been other attempts at master plans, but effectively they are just lists of maintenance work, not an actual direction of what we want to do with our Parks and Recreation System, who uses it, how they want to use it, how future users want to use it. We need to forecast out for people's changing needs. We need to also understand, are we short of open space in certain areas of the city? Where, for example, take Niki Hansen is a playground. Is that actually in the right place? Are there any families where they have children? It might have been when it was first built, but has that shifted, all right? Should we be providing resources to where people want it, all right? So we need to do a bit of work around that. That's an extensive exercise for the future proof source, all right? It's a blueprint, similar to the comprehensive plan, you know, of this will be specifically for Parks and Recreation. It will ask some good questions, you know, how fit for proofness our facilities are, how they could be approved, how we even go pay for that. So I would say it's a 20-year vision, all right? Nothing is short-term, everything takes a long time. Some of the other things in that budget area, again, some more software licenses so we can actually improve our quality of delivery, you know? One of the systems I'm looking at is helping with the pool and the chemical management, making sure we've got checklists, things like that, which we don't have at the moment. And again, if we want people to use our services, we need to actually be able to tell them about it. So I want to put a little slice of pie in for communication and marketing and promotion because, again, I'm, my point of view is that people aren't familiar because they may not know what we're going to offer, all right? Moving on to the Parks Maintenance, that's gone up because of a proposal split in the way we divvy up our existing maintenance staff salaries. For the, for example, for financial year 21, my Parks Maintenance Team has actually split four ways, 25% into each cost center, but that's not actually reflective of the time they spend. So I'm wanting to front-load that into the parks here because that's where they spend most of their time. As Helen has alluded to, you know, we've also potentially got some increased pay rates, some step increases for novel staff, and whatever also comes out of the collective bargaining agreement. One of the areas, again, is some professional services. So we have no asset condition reports, so we don't know whether any of our parks, facilities, structures are going to fall down tomorrow or have another 10 years of life. That's a big risk. We need to know that information so we can make informed decisions about repairing things or replacing or decommissioning them. That comes at a cost. We also need some specialized services around electric work, plumbing work, and any design work that we need. For example, if we wanted to change the layout of Odyea Camp Park to put more spaces in there, we actually need somebody to design that because the current layout was literally done on a piece of paper by a staff member, and it doesn't work. None of the sites are the same size. One of them can't even be used because it's not big enough to fit an RV in, so let's get some professional help to future-proof ourselves. I've also put some increased money in there for building and structural repairs. Things visually are not in good shape. If I'm not an engineer, so I need assistance. It's a need of my team, who engineers, they're handy, you know? The other thing is I want to see myself in some professional development. We've got a number of playgrounds, yet we don't actually have a certified playground inspector, which is actually a thing. We should have, all right? So we have, we do not inspect our playgrounds in any way, shape, or form on a regular basis. We can only fix it when it breaks. That's, I want to get us a head of the ball. Moving on, the recreation area, so which is basically Budakie. I've said remove my salary out of there, but I want to add a recreation programmer. So as you know, we're not currently running anything at Budakie, and that simply becomes down to because we've got no capacity and capability to do that. So we need to add that back in if we want increased usership of our facilities. And that goes with the pool as well, all right? So that position would help run aquatic programs at the pool and at Budakie. I'd also like to introduce, reintroduce a part-time, what I've called an office clerk. That's just to help us improve our process, our efficiency, make sure we're doing things quickly, simply, easily. At the moment, we are more moved from temporary staff to actual part-time staff to help deliver programs. I want us to be able to open extended hours. So at the moment, as you're probably aware, our facilities are not open on Sundays, and that simply comes down to staff availability, yet weekends when most people usually want to recreate. So I'd like to stretch that. I've also put increased suns for building maintenance. Again, I want us to do annual scheduled maintenance shutdowns every year for at least two weeks a year because things have been neglected. Again, professional services, engineering assessments on Budakie. What's its life? Where are the things which are going to fail? We simply don't know that. We've got a list of projects on the whiteboard. Again, an example is all of our gym equipment at Budakie is not legally maintained, it's not inspected, so we need to get somebody in to help with that process. We fix it if it's reported to us through the spoken. That's not, we are not ready. The pool, very quickly, I just want to talk about adding some part-time lifeguard and all safety instructors, you know? It's unfortunate we're in the situation we are at the moment where we don't have any qualified staff. That is, that is going to change. I've got a lifeguard course running next weekend. I've only got three people on it, but three is better than zero, so that's a step forward in my book. Again, nationally, under national standards, anytime the pool is open for the public, there needs to be a qualified lifeguard. That's a national standard. It's unfortunately a voluntary standard, but that's what we'll be judged on if something went wrong. Again, want to introduce a scheduled maintenance shutdown of the pool. My staff tell me it hasn't been emptied for at least five years. That raises a few alarm bells for me. I come from an environment where swimming pools are shut down on a annual basis where you visually inspect the quality of the pool and fix things because things are broken inside that swim pool, but we've never shut it down. So we need to do that, give the things a deep clean, give it even a fresh coat of paint. People would be amazed what a fresh coat of paint does to make somebody feel invigorated and alive again. Again, professional services. We need to get an audit of that swimming pool done. We need to know where we're deficient in terms of meeting the Model Aquatic Health Code and the national standard. Currently, I wouldn't like to say where we are on that standard, but we need to meet it. Again, more professional services to replace things my team are not qualified to do. For example, the electrical panel at the pool, you opened that up and it's rusted. That's not acceptable. That's the original panel, built in 1968 or whenever it was developed. So we've got some issues, but we can solve these issues. None of them are unsolvable, all right? None of them are unsolvable.
So I think we're kind of running short of time here, but I would love to invite council members if anyone has any questions.
I was just going to ask if we could have a copy of this.
Sure.
Okay. That would be useful because I wasn't taking notes, I was just listening. Anne?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I appreciated the look at the, or the examination of the revenues versus the costs and the membership structure. So I'm totally open to, yeah, looking at fees and if those should be increased to offset some of those costs and, yeah, simplifying the structure. Also, the question about if city tax is included in those prices, I think is interesting. Oh, it's not? Yeah, so I mean, there's revenues.
So effectively, I want to propose a simplification of the system of memberships. Let's cut them down, let's keep it really easy. Let's get rid of some of the categories which are not needed. Let's have one price, not multiple prices for different groups in terms of a summer and a winter. Let's just have one price. The main thing is make some consistency around prices as well. So at the moment, a daily rate for an adult is $5 in winter and a child, say, $3. That's roughly 60%. So let's apply that across the other price categories as well. And the other thing I will be pitching is let's actually reduce the annual price. So at the moment, my observation is we have an annual price for an adult and a family and various other ones, but most of the people buy it when it's on sale in November. So why have to say, why not just offer that year-round that price? Because it's only local to a buyer. We're award locals year-round. It's a change. I think also my price structure, as an example, putting things up to include tax. Not saying let's go crazy in those prices. I'm saying just include the tax component and round it up in year one. And it's worked. One piece of work I want to do next year is a cost recovery strategy. What is actually our philosophy or what we charge, who we charge it for? And let's work towards a plan.
And I think what's good to know is that Duncan's workshopping this with the Parks and Rec Commission. So whatever is developed, he will be workshopping with them. And if there's any decision that needs to be made at the council level, that will come back to you after they have done all the work to do that. So thank you, Duncan. Again, any other questions?
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I haven't been in the facilities in a while, but see electric rates are high and LED lights are coming down quite drastically. That's what I've been looking at. But I don't see any money, there's hardly any money for boiler maintenance. That's not going to work unless you've got an alternative plan. But building maintenance, there's that mess, do you?
Yeah, yeah.
Boiler maintenance.
At the end of the day, I've increased things. I haven't gone overboard. I didn't want to shock you more from the moment around the cost effects. Part of my journey of discovery is that we actually have no mechanism to cost projects. So if we were to do boat or the maintenance work, I couldn't tell you what needs to be because we don't cost it. We need to build some systems to be able to scope out projects to then get an understanding of the cost effects. So my opinion is that a lot of our plant is actually in reasonable condition. But I'm not an expert. I need to get an expert to actually give us an opinion. So usually as well, everywhere else I've worked, they've always had a depreciation fund, which has gone to on-time upkeep. So that's a different question, different answer, but it's something we need to be thinking about. How do we continue to fund, replace it on the vessel, and upkeep the vessel?
Well, I appreciate your fresh eyes from the top to the bottom of this. It's been needed and I appreciate what you're going on. I'd like your presentation. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jeff on the phone? Did we lose him?
My connection's pretty grumble. I've got a hard time trying to follow anyone here, so I don't hope I have anything to add.
Okay, we're going to try and reset during the break, Jeff. So Andrew and I are working on that. I just wanted to ask one real quick question and then we'll get Sam up. The fee schedule for Budakie and the pool, I think, comes before council, does it not? Right, okay. So that'll be interesting to see. I know we're reviewing the Cordova Center fees as well. I don't think they collect tax either, so I don't know.
So, and I would say that given that we're in the process of budget, it's possible that those new fees won't yet be established for this budget. However, we can possibly look at them again and amend the budget if necessary. So we're working hard on that. Duncan's working hard on that. And the Parks and Rec Commission met last night and they're actively trying to figure this all out.
Thanks, Duncan, for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Sam can go to the hot seat.
This is Melina. I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to let you know that I'm online.
Oh, hello.
Okay, I'm going to have to admit right up front, I'm not as well-prepared as Duncan. I've been pretty sick for the last couple of weeks. My first move back to work and it's been naptime, at lunch every day. But I will, and so part of that goes back to this, we're looking at these numbers exactly. For instance, chip seal isn't in here on those, this one presented. So Helen and I have been working on getting things rounded up. So chip seal in at $65,000. It's kind of the standard tank-ish, you know, three, two to three tanks we've done, includes delivery and all of that stuff. Also, I increased the cost for street lighting, which is, oh, not here, from 50 to 62. For whatever reason, streetlights, electricity is in the street budget. So in the last few years, it's been 50,000, which hasn't been adequate. And now CEC has done a rate study and determined that the streetlights need to be increased. So Barb and I just kind of worked through and tried to get a good estimate in there. Also, in street maintenance, the personnel numbers aren't reflecting the fourth operator in this one. I've asked for the fourth operator. I feel like my job is to tell you what I need to do, the best that I can do. So we put it in there and, you know, it's been there, it was there previous, before, previously for a very long time. We've added new subdivisions, we've added new roads, we have incorporated all of the outline area of the old city boundary, the annex. You know, the workload has changed and it has increased. And many of those subdivisions are difficult winter work. So, you know, the other thing I will say about having four operators is you've got a pair. Every time you do a project, you've got two people who go out and do it. Right now, three's great, but you can't split it up so much. So that's just my pitch for the fourth operator. I do believe it's needed, especially during seasonal season.
So, Sam, can you take a question real quick?
Can I ask a question about that? So I saw that in the streets, the salaries only just are up about 50. So is that for the three operators or does that include?
I think the fourth. No? No, it's like the fourth.
Doesn't it include the fourth? Because I don't check.
Well, if we're looking at this one, the one that you and I just worked on was 329.
Oh, what? Oh, yeah. 329. Yeah, 329.
So do I know?
Page 28 of the packet for tonight. You're looking at the budget. This is the, you're looking at 21.
I forgot about that. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make sure. 329 reflects the.
Okay, I'm sorry. And so is chip sealing? No.
So Sam, can you clarify in the streets, how many people is that?
Four.
Four, okay.
In street maintenance. The mechanics are in equipment maintenance. And four operators and Mark. So five people total.
All right, okay, yep.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, I forgot about this.
And then we, her mention of chip seal, that wasn't in there and it wasn't in last year's budget. So we do want to bring that back to the table. And it was 69, is that what you said?
Sixty.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay.
That 18,000 that's on this was when we paid that last payment to ShowStead for the chips. That's why that stayed last year. You know, in general, overall, you know, I asked for full cemetery, trying to get that casket lowering system, trying to get some cleanup work in there. Hopefully, seasonal people will come back. It's not easy to find seasonal workers, as I'm sure you all know. So we're hoping for that. And Mark has some good ideas to maybe improve that area. Dave, I know in the last year, we talked about that $80,000 in equipment maintenance and how some of that is just a just-in-case type of thing. And so that is still there and it actually worked out pretty well this year when the loader engine broke. We still, you know, we didn't end up splitting it all, but it was nice to be have there.
Can you speak to the new equipment and when it's going to be in tune?
Well, that's refuse.
Yeah, that's right. We don't have anything in the streets.
Unfortunately, they have a list.
Yeah.
And we'll throw out a capital improvement. Yeah, that's refuse. So, I mean, those are kind of my big ones. Some are out of my control, such as electricity. Some are not. Facilities, though, in this budget, is this, that needs to be updated. There was some miscommunication and missed things in there. So that one has some changes that we need to get to this. And Malins, right now, focusing, as Duncan has mentioned, a lot on the state of the public safety building and, you know, at some point, where do we draw the line? What are we going to do with that? What's its lifespan? The roof is leaking, those kinds of things. But he's also focusing a lot on buyer safety because we have let that roll for so many years that, you know, the pool and chamber and these other places weren't even allowed to come. So there is a pretty substantial knock in there for buyer safety projects.
Any questions? Council on the phone? And in the room? I see none.
Just a crack.
I knew you could.
Since I live, approximately, probably works buildings down here, I've seen scurrying around, recently dug a trench. I think it would be, I think it would be nice to have those updates on what they're doing down there, the council. And I say that because they are, they're continually upgrading that building, which I appreciate, and they're doing a lot of the work themselves. So, you know, when they do things, I think it would be nice to have little snapshots of what they are doing. We know they're not busy 24/7, but when they've got time doing these things, and that's good.
Yes, they have a lot of side projects they work on against Dean Rep to do roadwork. And, you know, the popples, they never end.
Never end.
Never end.
Okay, maybe we could quickly go around the room and I'll start on the phone, but Helen had asked us for our priorities for cuts and additions, and I don't think we have time to detail that all, but I have big-picture comments I can give her. So I'm ready for that. I don't know, and then what I'm going to do is I'm going to submit to her some other things that I've been marking, like I'd like to see all the Cordova Center pulled out, separated. So I'm just going to, I've found other things that I would say could go, you know, just to help, and I'll submit those to her, maybe not tomorrow, but over the weekend. So maybe we can start on the phone. Jeff, can you hear us? Can you give Helen some priorities to focus on?
I don't think I'm sitting comfortably ready to state any priorities right now. I couldn't get comments to Helen this weekend.
Okay.
This has been a bunch to try to absorb in a short period of time here, and I just don't think I'm ready with any comments.
Maybe as an ask Helen said too, it's changing every day. Okay, Melina, how about you?
Yeah, I'm kind of in the same boat. I think a lot of things are changing every day. We need to have our basic needs met, and then I know that a lot of things have been put off year to year because our budget's always been tight. But hopefully with some new revenues coming in and grant opportunities, fill up the move gap, but I don't have one specific criteria.
Okay, thank you. And if you do have other comments or have time, you can just communicate them to Helen.
And I would totally entertain personal phone calls if anyone wants to discuss or ask questions to me directly, that might be useful.
Councilman Ellison?
Yeah, depending on who you talk to, everything is a priority, right? So, but I think the public safety is a critical aspect. Everybody wants to have a safe community, so we need to, we need to support that. I think the schools, although I'm not necessarily in favor of max funding that we possibly give, I think we need to continue to support them as we have the last few years and make sure that they're covered. I think the pool is critical for our community. I would like to see us have more, for lack of a better term, open swim time. And I recognize we've got staffing issues right now, but perhaps we can solve some of those. I don't know if we've looked at where your advertising for that lifeguard stuff is, but hopefully the schools and the swim teams for sure know that that's going on. Maybe we could have, I think they still have the SWEP program. Maybe that's an opportunity for a couple of the high school kids to serve as lifeguards and then be actually employed. Student Work Exchange Program there to the schools, I don't know. Something to look at for all the departments, I think, whether you want to call it internships or SWEP, whatever, I think that that's an opportunity that we can get good labor for maybe not necessarily the highest prize out there and provide some education and training for some individuals that might work out to our benefit in future. Anyway, in general, I guess I'm with you on the, I listened to the workshop last week that you all had, and I think the priorities, you know, again, priorities for the community, public safety, public works. I think that pool is critical in recreation because we're a seaside community. And I talked to Helen earlier today, and I'd like to see in this packet, I haven't had a whole lot of time to digest it all, and the way it is currently with the previous years and one set of packets and the current new budget in a different set, it's hard going back and forth and back and forth on that side. Whatever year or years you want us to compare to, I like those right next to the proposed budget. I think you understand what that is. You know, if we want to skip 2020 and use 2019 or 2018 and 2019. just put those next to it. And that with Kathy on the, the bigger numbers are certainly easier to see, especially when I'm trying to look at them on my phone on the road. It's a tough lift back and forth. So, but anyway, I think you're, you know, from the look to the end thing, I think we're pretty close here. It looks like you've, the allocated administrative costs, we've upped that a certain percentage. What are, what is that percentage now?
Fifteen.
Is it even across the board?
Yes, we went across the board rather than have it fluctuate. I'm, that's still negotiable, but we just put a plug in at fifteen percent.
Okay. That and the ARPA were the only ones that I had a question about in the, ARPA was the...
That's a new number.
Was it, it's COVID, basically is what that is. So anyway, I do have a list of little questions here and there that I'll just send to Helen.
Okay.
Take this time.
Councilman Schaper?
Yeah, I guess I would say in terms of priorities for like the next iteration, it seems like, or for increasing budgets, it seems like we do need to prioritize like upgrades that would help with some of the areas where we're liable and more liable than others. So for like, you know, having lifeguards at the pool, that seems like a pretty important priority, I would say. Or like the fire, maybe getting up to code for fire safety or equipment inspections, stuff like that. So making sure that we're covering the city, making sure we're, yeah, just on the up and up and not going to get ourselves a little blind. And also, yeah, doing the free or the fee schedule examination to help support increased costs. And also, if there's more specific comments.
Councilman Taylor?
Just, I would echo comments just made and Dave's comments. And it's, it irritates me that I know that we've lost six percent on the table for this recreation for all these years. Bedarky has always been one that I've always tried to ascertain of what's the cost? What do we bring in and what's the cost to run that? And nobody can ever give us the right answer. Little history on that, a few years ago when we were trying to build a new school, you know, I don't know who said it, but somehow got put out there, well, we can take away bedarky because now we have two gyms. We don't need three. And of course, that never happened. And bedarky's been there ever since. I really appreciate your fresh look at this. I appreciate Sam's fresh look at her end of the deal. We've been running on autopilot for so long with some of the staff that we've had and rotating managers that I think we're, we're getting to where we need to be. And I'll take another look at this, but for the most part, I'm going to support the budget. So, and I agree with Dave. I don't know if we can do increases in the school, but we should go where we were last year. So, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to take a real quick turn because it's seven. So I've been looking at all of this just in terms of liability and safety. I had no idea we had no lifeguards. I had no idea of lots of things. I know we needed an operator at Public Works. And I've seen one operator go down my very scary hill by themselves. And I'm always watching them to make sure they get down okay. So my priorities are fire, EMS, public safety, parks and rec, across the board for parks and rec, and public works. I'm really hoping we can fund the school at the highest level that we can possibly manage and also fulfill CCMC's request. But for me, it all, if, we just need to fix the things that we've been ignoring. And Duncan's fresh eyes and hearing Sam's report, you know, I knew there were operators missing, but hearing the bedarky thing is really helpful. So that's, I'm all for putting energy there.
So for counsel, what I would like to suggest is I'm going to send out a new document based on the new numbers that are coming in and some refinements and corrections. I didn't create a perfect document the first time. So I will make sure that that gets published. And then I think Susan probably will make sure it gets put online. So those working documents are fresh and up to date. And again, the next new numbers that we'll have will be reflective of proposed CBA changes. And you guys will have the opportunity to weigh in on those before anything is finalized.
Okay, Councilman Ellison?
Yeah, just one last thing real quick. I wouldn't be against, you know, going back to the permanent fund. We don't, don't like to spend money from that. But one-time fixes for life and safety and those kind of issues that would, you know, get things up to code or, you know, things that have to be done for life and safety issues or insurance purposes or those kind of things. I don't have a problem with putting those in the capital budget to come from the permanent fund. Of course, you know, I need a bunch of others up here to agree with that. But I decided to throw that out there. Those life safety one-time issues, I would categorize those into a, not the operating budget, but in a separate...
So we'll have a separate capital budget. And I think this gives me great hope that we can get all this accomplished. But yeah, we're getting close. And just so you know that with the numbers that I've plugged in and the changes that have been made, we are looking at a bottom line problem at this moment, snapshot of forty-one thousand dollars. So we're getting there.
Does that count the grant we just got, Dave?
No.
Oh, okay.
But we have to put the expense side in, so it's a wash. But nonetheless, I want to just really reiterate that the Library and Museum have been bringing home the bake and they got over a hundred thousand in grants committed for next fiscal year. And they're going to do a lot of really great things with it. So, thank you.
Councilman Ellison?
That's great. Thank you. One other thing that I want the rest of the council to be aware of and to, to look at, this budget also includes spending the permanent fund earnings next year, what we're seeing before us. There's three hundred and fifty thousand in earnings. And that's, that comes from the permanent fund earnings. That's, you know, technically, it's okay in our code to, to spend those earnings before they go back into the permanent fund. But in the past, we've always reinvested those in the permanent fund to grow that. So just a thought for, for people to think about that that is something that this budget before us includes, is spending those permanent fund earnings.
And we did budget two hundred thousand last year as well. I'm not sure what the history is. But, and obviously, if they were not needed, they would just get reinvested. But, you know, that's, that's something that you guys need to really think about, how you want to use those earnings. So, thank you, Dave.
Get our total, aren't we? I hope that that's not our total earnings going in. Was it a percentage of it?
I don't have the exact number. I just pulled it out of, what we, what we typically have done is, is pulled a certain portion from the reported audited permanent fund investment earnings and pull them forward. And so any number that would be budgeted for next year would have to come out of the audit for the actions for 2021. And I don't have that number yet, but the realized numbers are.
Anybody else? Cam?
Can you remind me of the schedule for the next budget meeting? Is it next week or is it in two weeks?
Next week at seven. We're meeting with the school board at six at the school and then seven o'clock here after that for budget.
And at that meeting too, I hope is that you guys will approve any recommended CBA changes.
All right, I'm going to give Andrew, how much time you need, Andrew?
I don't know either. At least ten minutes.
Okay, we're going to take a ten-minute break if that's okay, Susan?
Yeah. So we're...